Well, why don't we, why don't we just do it by, we could just do it by the interviews. So, I don't know what notes you've been keeping or anything like that. So.
I have them all right, if that's helpful.
I mean, do you wanna just start and we'll see where you're at? I mean.
Yeah, each of us. Couple, couple of things to remember, just to remember. You do not have to go with the highest bidder. You don't have, and you, you don't have to follow what the master plan says. The master plan does not dictate their property, it dictates certain things. Uh, but it, it doesn't even dictate, it gives you as guidelines. My opinion, most of these meet your guidelines for the downtown district.
Also, the, even the lowest bid is twenty-two thousand more than the first one.
I, I would not, I would.
And they're eighteen thousand apart, so what do you, I mean, the money is.
The money is basically something to, cause you have to sell the property, you can't just give it away. So, um, that's some, that's something to remember. Then I think once we have whoever we have, we gotta, I gotta talk to you about the development agreement cause I, we gotta figure out a way, we gotta figure out a way that in case something happens with whoever you select and they can't follow through the project. It's gonna be harder to do cause you're selling it, like to try and claw the property back. Because if something were to, if, if they were to fail and there was something to happen, so. This is a little different than projects I've done because I've been involved in incentivizing projects and this is a non-incentive project, so, and you know, a lot of times when you have these, you do a full financial analysis of them to whether or not, I, I had it where you have them submit financial records to a CPA and they do, they do, the CPA does an investigation of whether or not projected cash flows, financial backing, they have the ability to do the project and they'll, they can usually tell you who, my experience is they can tell you the one that's probably the most capable of doing the project, process, project, and one who's probably the least capable. Um, and, but you're gonna spend several thousand dollars and I don't think you need to do that in this, especially since you're just selling the property. Um, I don't, I wouldn't recommend doing that, but I think what we probably wanna start first is probably start ranking them and seeing where you wanna go from here, so. So, I don't know, Mike, if you wanna start?
Oh, that's a terrible idea.
Do you just wanna, should we just do our top two or three?
Why don't you do, yeah, why don't, why doesn't everyone at least do their top two to start? Or why don't you do your top three to start?
Yep.
And then we go from there.
Mr. Mayor. Can, can I do a, I would like to do a brief statement assuring people that this is a tough thing to do.
Very tough.
That, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, it's very difficult. All these proposals have merit and.
I think they're all good proposals.
They are really good proposals.
They're all good proposals.
That's the problem.
And that, you know, that's a good problem to have.
Yeah?
Well, when I think we're all set and done, what decision we make I think is gonna be a good decision. I am not second guessing.
There's no bad decisions.
There you go.
There's no bad decisions.
No, we're, we're moving forward.
I hope that some of these, these, uh, contributors choose other places to make these establishments in Lowell. I, I don't think that any of these bring down Lowell, I think that they move us forward, so.
And, and, and like I said earlier, if, if they don't get this property, I hope they find some other property in town that they can bring their ideas back. Because I think there's some really, really good ideas.
Just because they're not chosen by us does not mean we don't believe in them.
Correct. So.
I, I.
Alright, my number one is BGR. My number two is Todd. And my number three, I'm having a hard time deciding between the Edge and Shabby Sheenigan. So I have two number threes. That's all.
BGR one, Edge number two. Um. I like, I like the Barkus' idea in antisocial. I, um, BGR, Edge, Barkus.
Okay, I like the BGR, the Edge, antisocial.
Alright, I was BGR, or I'm sorry, the Edge, BGR, Barkus.
What were yours again, Leo, I'm sorry?
The Edge, BGR, Barkus.
Jim, yours were the BGR, Edge.
Antisocial.
Antisocial.
I like the fact that it was totally different than.
I, I, I know, I'm having a hard time.
Uh, I mean, yeah, Barkus, I, I agree with you, but we said top three and.
Yep.
That, I.
I really liked the antisocial, I just think that's a lot of high ends in the fire. Like it's a brand new restaurant. I can't imagine that.
I don't look at so much a restaurant as, as a distillery.
No, I mean, the Red Bull.
Yeah.
And then you're doing both of these at the same time.
Well, I think it's fair to say, besides Shabby, I'm sorry, Shabby Sheenigan.
Yeah.
Everybody else has other volumes in the fire, right? Everybody else is up, doing other things. This is her main, this is, this is it for her, this is.
I, I'm, I'm gonna do another little freestyle here and explain my vote.
Okay.
My, and initially, because I own a retail store downtown, my first thought was, I hope something retail comes in. Well, then, I started thinking as a city councilperson and I was thinking, what's gonna bring the most revenue to the city from that piece of property? And that's why I leaned towards the putting in four, five places for somebody to live.
I want purely residential too, because I think those are, the people that are most ingrained are the ones that live right downtown. And I think it's a cool place to live and I really think like, there's a lot of parking spots, sure, but that all has built in, uh, in residential.
Yeah, I think that's a nice, um, benefit to living there is that you have your own closed parking space.
And I know that there's concern about blocking the view, but there's not a lot, those apartments and the rest of that building aren't coming along and some of them haven't even been started.
Right.
And it's a ways off from what I know of them. And also, I don't think it affects that much because it's not, you know, you're not putting up a building right in front of your backyard.
And BGRs, unless I misunderstood, they're two floors.
Two floors.
Correct.
The other one was three.
Correct.
Yeah, they're still looking at, they're looking doing a white, they're looking at a white box.
Yep.
Yes.
Um, so they're looking at, they're looking at mixed use.
Right, well, yeah, there's a little retail, one down and four up.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so, everyone in their top three has Edge and BGR.
Yeah.
So, maybe at this point, you take the other ones out and you debate the difference between BGR and Edge.
So, when I think about, when I first moved to Lowell, I found it, we've also spoke about, say something is affordable, doesn't mean it's affordable for everybody, it just means it's affordable for a person who can afford it, right? But when I first moved to Lowell, I found Lowell to be incredibly affordable and manageable for a one-parent household. Maybe living on the river is not for a one-parent household, however, it's something that I, I don't think that I can't strive for or that it's impossible for somebody. So when I think about putting in more residents in a place that is outside of the capabilities of people who live here, I struggle because I'm like, I want the people who are here, who, who I know who want to stay in Lowell, but are being pushed out of Lowell because they can't afford it. And so I struggle with putting in residences that aren't affordable for those people. Not to say I don't like the idea, because obviously it's on my list, but it's just, that's where I struggle when it comes to residences.
I totally hear that. I was disappointed when, uh, several years ago, when the Superior Lofts was just being launched, MEDC had restrictions on what you could charge for rent for the, because I looked into it for my building and we got pretty close, anyway, they would put like a five-year cap on it and I thought, that's really cool. Well, that's gone.
Right.
They, they took that away. And my only response to anyone that would address me was saying, hey, that's not affordable housing, you're not gonna live on a body of water and find affordable housing unless it's your cousin's lake or something.
The other thing is, I don't think we get enough credit for the amount of affordable housing we actually have.
Okay.
Lowell, or what are they, Lowell One, Dela Vista Apartments, the Lowell One Apartments, the Birchwood Gardens, the, they're redoing all, Fromm's redoing all this stuff down here, making them look good. Affordable housing should provide somebody a certain level of security and comfort.
Sure.
Right? Riverfront property and, you know, indoor parking and those are amenities and they come with a cost and at the same time, that's his money.
Right.
It's his project. Anybody who goes there, they're not using city money or government money or taxpayer money, there's, it's a business, it's.
And quite frankly, unless you want an affordable housing project, it's gotta be going through the system.
Yeah.
It's not, these are not going through, I mean, this doesn't go through MEDC and, and quite frankly, I still am trying to wrap my head around this and how you can, when, when, especially when we know what construction costs are now, just for basic housing, how, unless it's, unless it's governed subsidized, it's, it's not gonna happen and then, then there's a debate about that, but, you know, if, this, I mean, I, I get your point, cause I, I, I'm, you know, and, and, and affordable housing is obviously an issue, but it's, you're not gonna have affordable housing on a riverfront, yeah.
I'm not looking for affordable housing on the riverfront, that's going to be people's argument.
Well, I know, yeah.
How are we asking somebody who, who has the money to invest, right? Like, why aren't you investing in the people who are already here? Why don't you build, why don't you build something that is affordable for the people who are, who are here, who have grown up here, who wanna stay here, who wanna come here as a one-parent household to need these places lit?
Right.
And so, the argument will be, fine, put these on the river, but then what does that do to everybody else around them? All the other places, you know, it just jacks up the housing market because you have these more expensive condos and apartments.
To be fair, I, I, I don't know what they give back to the community, maybe they give a lot more than we even can think of, we don't, we don't know what they do in their private time and stuff like that, so, so, I mean, listening to them, not just that, but everybody says, we wanna give back to the community.
True.
So, so there's one way that we can do that and there's other ways, so hopefully, whatever we decide, they meet that criteria of what, what they said they were going to do when he sat here today.
I would argue that almost every, everybody really, who submitted a proposal has given back.
Sure.
You know?
And they all, in, in all of their presentations, they included, uh, and that's part of why it was so hard, if somebody came in here with, you know, from the other side of the state and was like, yeah, I wanna come here and make a whole bunch of money, every one of them said, I wanna incorporate some form of giving back and.
And they all have ties to the community.
Right, yeah, but with residential, you're bringing more people here who are going to invest and give back and plant roots and hopefully outgrow these places and buy three-bedroom homes.
There was a couple of things that struck out to me and, and I think Mike said it when, when we were offline and, and, and that was, what's it really gonna take to, to bring that back to like that piece of property? And, and I thought some of these people maybe felt short on their estimate and if, if you're looking at two hundred thousand and it really comes at six hundred, at four hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money to go try to find through investors or whatever. And if you didn't have it, so, I mean, we're, we're assuming that we're thinking it's gonna be much higher than they, they, they thought it was gonna be, so, that's something that I looked at at some of these bids too, when, when we talked about that finance, can, can they really pull it off?
Edge said about eight hundred thousand, I think both Todd and Brett came up with a million, I think those numbers are close, I mean, I don't.
I thought they were the closest.
There's a clue, I mean, I, just my experience, off, you know, off the cuff, I think you gotta put a million dollars on that.
Well, you can ask Greg personally, you can have any estimate you want. And if you get in there and there's a whole bunch of stuff, and these people haven't spent months in this building.
And we haven't asked them.
No.
No.
You know what I mean? Like, we, what, all of us have walked in and out of Spring Grove hundreds of times.
And what, what if you can't fix the backside of the 181, I gotta put a whole new structure there, that, that's a big dollar, so I wanna make sure that what we do to somebody they got.
Like BGR, it sounds like what Brett's gonna do is he's just gonna tear it down.
He's gonna rip it out of the street.
Which, you know, the, the age of that building and, it, that might be a viable option.
Yeah.
Keeping, keeping a building, I mean, I, my building was built in eighteen sixty-eight, it's got character, okay? The line check, not, I mean, Spring Grove was built in the, what, fifties? And so there's a little character, but with those windows in, it's like, holy smoke, it's a whole new building.
Well, you can tell somebody like Brett cares.
Yeah.
Because that Superior building, he went out of his way to get the right windows and he went out of his way to get the white, the correct shade of white for the brick.
And he saved the.
Yeah.
He saved the boiler which named the restaurant.
Yeah, he did some, some things right and will the Edge company do some things right? I, I don't have enough, only what I saw in the presentation, but maybe all their other projects are just, just as good, I, I just don't know. You know, so.
We have.
So it sounds to me.
Three BGRs on top and one Edge on top.
And the Edge on top, the BGR is second, right?
Yeah.
Right.
What's that?
We're just talking about where everybody ranked.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think, I think I put Edge on top because it's, because I have, uh, mixed feelings on residents going in there. Um, but I also, with Edge, do you picture people sitting in Edge for hours while somebody goes shopping? I mean, I'm, I would be the shopper, right? Like, I might go in, grab a coffee and like mosey around, but then I'm out, right? I'm not the person who's gonna sit there and, um, I mean, but maybe I would, maybe I'm, you know?
I don't think it's like going to a mall though, where you leave your husband in the food court or whatever, shopping in our downtown is an experience, it's not a shopping trip. You're not buying essentials and toilet paper and milk and stuff like that.
Right.
Where you can go, they'll just pick me up when you're done.
When we went to McLaRus' for a wedding a few weeks ago, the brewery was there, but so was the downtown shops and, and it was a shopping experience, walking through all of them.
Right.
We went and tasted wine, we, we, that was at, at a butcher, we tasted wine at a, people that were selling antiques, we tasted cheese everywhere you went, so, I mean, cause this is Swiss, but again, and my thing about the Edge, I like the concept, I don't know if they've been in business long enough that they could say that they've sustained the business for, for two years or three years, it's, it's relatively new in August and you can only sell so many cooking utensils and that part of it, so.
Right.
That was my part of it, but I like the whole concept.
I like the Edge concept, I think it's super cool, but I think we already provide that with the social district.
Yes.
You can take your drink and walk to Close Store and then down to Marty's and over to Eric's and you can do that and I think, you know, you're the two brand-new restaurants coming in already, they're gonna have, you know, I'm sure walking food, to-go food.
Yeah.
And I think it's a super cool concept, but I think it's a service we already provide, the community already provides, with all the restaurants in the social district and the, and New Union and Big Boiler and we hit all the spots on that.
Yeah.
And I think a business that's basically a built-in social district kinda draws away from the rest of the social district.
And i- if they decide that this, but I wanna come into town, it's really hard to renovate something that I think they need to be in the downtown historical district, now go ahead and renovate something to meet their needs and, well, it's not gonna happen.
I just, I'm, I'm, I prefer the residential.
So, if I'm going to BGR to my top piece, what's the discussion look like?
Everybody has it in their top then.
I mean, you're, you both have a, you have it in your top too.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much there because they still have a white box opportunity for somebody else to come in, which I, that's like, that was why I voted BGR, because I think that it gives opportunity to somebody who, who will use it.
Yeah.
Um, whether, even if it's one of these ideas, if this, you know, Shabby, I know she wanted to get away from renting from somebody, but Shabby Sheenigan.
Is it big enough for her to, to house that?
I, I don't know, but maybe a better option than what she's currently in.
I'm, I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but the economic impact on the city, six new Lowell leg power customers, cause there's five residences, one business, six new water sewer hookups, five, at least five residents, possibly, I mean, he's got five units, two of them are two.
Two and three, I think, three or one bed.
Three, one bed, okay, let's assume one person rents those and the other two are two people, so there's seven new people that live in town.
So we're looking at, let me get this straight, where I thought it was, I thought it was only in two units. Two of them.
On top, he's got four.
Two, two bedrooms.
Ah, okay.
And three, one.
And then one on the bottom.
And three, one beds, so five, ground floor, four up here and then the white box crap thing.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I said six new.
There, I think, there, it makes sense, I, I get them all, get them all jumbled up.
Yeah.
And that may ease a little bit of the pain over to Lowell leg power who, who really thought the high bid would do that and I think over time, those six meters will, will offset some of that cost that they had to get right up front.
The beds are so close together in the grand scheme of, plus you're not counting the, just abnormal investment it's gonna be to make it workable in most states.
Right.
The bid price is just to get it off the walls.
Right.
Right.
And get something moving over there.
Basically, cause we can't just give away the building for a dollar.
No, right, it's a, yeah, it's a proof of concept almost, but.
And maybe it's something, you know, I'm starting to think about how to prepare a development agreement, maybe it's something that the money sits in escrow until the project's complete, so if the project doesn't, if the project doesn't come through, then they get their money back and we get, I gotta talk to the city attorney about that if we can do that, but that might be, I mean, my biggest concern, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying any of these would do this, but I've had this happen.
Right.
Where I've had development projects go south and we're left holding the bag.
Right.
And anything you can do to prevent that from happening and, and the difference here is, like I said, we're selling the property, it's, it's a little different when you're selling the property, cause once they sell, they're gone and, and, and any type of clawback, they may be non-forcible, so.
Well, the other concern with the clawback is you are then fighting the narrative as well.
True.
So we take your money and then we take your property, nobody else is gonna bid on that because whoever is gonna be out there spinning the narrative that we're impossible to work with and all this other.
Well, I had, so, and, and so, let's just say, I mean, this is what, the issue that happened in my previous day, we had a developer who, well, we had a developer take the fire hall the first time and what ended up happening with them is when we, when we, and like, we reviewed their finances, we were gonna give them X amount of dollars now, I told you, our attorneys would stroke out of, we did that here, but the things that, the things we did there, um, they were not, they were not the most capable to do the project, but the downtown development authority got enamored with the project. And for a year and a half, they literally did nothing to the building, did nothing, it just sat and people are bugging us, what are you, what are you doing about it? What are you doing about it? Well, part of the problem was, was, you know, you can only nudge them so much and then eventually we had a conversation with them about near that year and a half point where it's like, are you gonna do something with us? And they're like, oh, yeah, 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 well then come to find out, they ended up, they started going into bankruptcy, what ended up happening was, this company that was gonna build the micro brewery into, into the, uh, into the fire hall, was, it was called the Michigan Brewery Company and they got involved with Kid Rock and Kid Rock's badass beer. Well, what happened is they overextended themselves financially because the demand that he was requiring to sell his product, they couldn't keep up with, well, it caused them financial, basically it ruined them financially to the point where, um, no bank, the banks called the loans back, they ended up having to go bankrupt, um, the, the county, county seized, the, 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 Ingle County seized their property, Webberville and because of the clawback provisions, we had, two days later, we were able to take the possession back of the building and then six weeks later, the cup, the, the, the fire hall who went, or Union Joints who went in the fire hall, they got it and they started shortly thereafter and the rest is history. And so, my, my always concern is, is that to make sure that if the project goes south, we have a protection. Now, the other thing we've done, I've done, I did a development project before where the property, so, we own the property, we partnered with a developer to build the mixed use building, I think you went to Fett and saw it, it's right on the corner, we did a, we did a ground lease with them, we did a twenty-five-year ground lease with them, where we told them for X amount, so you have X amount of time, you gotta get the project, you know, as long as you get the project constructed, we don't charge you. Um, however, if you don't, if you don't get the project done by this point, then it's twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the next twenty-five years, you're paying the city and they agreed to that. Well, it got to a point where they got overextended, we ended up having to loan them more money, which our city attorneys would tell you that you can't do, um, but we did it and, um, the project happened and, and basically what happened was the land the property was on, we gave them the land for a dollar, which also our attorneys can't tell you can't do, but, um, but those are some examples of clawbacks, but the things, those were lease purchase options, we don't have a lease purchase option here, so, I need to talk about this with Jessica a little bit more as we prepare that because the biggest, my biggest concern is, do I, Brett, or Brett is more than capable of doing a project, I don't, I don't doubt that, I know, I, we know Brett, we know what Brett does here and Brett does good projects. I just wanna make su, you know, but, you know, anything can happen that's out of the realm of possibilities and I, I think the biggest concern is if something happens to that proj, that project and it doesn't happen, well now, now the city looks really bad because.
And do we though, because we've done our due diligence and we've done the RFP and we've asked all the questions to everybody and it's a sale, it's not like we're getting into the landlord business and we have to worry, number one, I don't think with any of the proposals, the worst case is gonna be anywhere near what we get, I think we'll be more at the top end, but I don't, I'm not as concerned, I guess, about our optics if it doesn't go, I mean, we did our due diligence, Light and Power did their due diligence, if, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, you know? I'm not worried about, and the liability with that building, whatever happens inside it, is not our problem.
Right. How do you feel about his idea of putting the money in escrow until the construction goes ahead or is it, do you think that's?
If it doesn't happen, they get their money back, then.
Then we get the property back.
Yeah, but we're, then we're going through the same, how many times do we go through the same thing? Why don't we say, this is how much it is, you get it done, especially, most of the people on this list have, all the people on this list have a vested interest, I mean, it's gonna make the other stuff they're doing look bad if one thing fails and then we're right back here looking through five proposals and then that one goes south, then we're right back here looking.
Yeah, you run, I mean, you run that risk.
Yeah, I don't see this project being completed in twenty-twenty-two if, if they wouldn't invest this, it's gonna be a twenty-twenty-three project.
Probably.
If they're gonna tear it down, do all the things, get all the permits that they gotta do, we're, we're not gonna see anything to twenty-twenty-three.
I, I agree with you.
The way construction is going right now, it's their deal.
And that's fine.
But I do agree that, that we have to have some progress towards our property over that course of time, I think, done something, submitted permits, they got all these other things done and I'm gonna trust that he has the financial backing because that's what he said he has.
Well, I'm gonna trust also that he has the interest to get it done, he's.
Exactly.
He's come through on every other project he's started.
Yeah.
If we're talking about BGR.
Right.
And at the end of the day, even if you just. And at the end of the day, even if he just does the demo.
Then we have a.
Then we have a, a grassy lot.
I had a project like that happen, where the demo made the, the property look a million times better.
It's the city park. You go over there and play with your dogs, do whatever it is you do.
Right.
You know what I mean?
No, I agree.
There's no.
I just want, I, I just want to be.
There's no Titanic into the ice.
I, I guess that's kind of like a selling point for me, that he, I mean, I like the idea of like, restoring what we already have and being environmentally friendly and not just demolishing things, but it's sort of a selling point for me that he plans to demo it.
Who isn't character to a one-story cinder block.
It's a brick building.
I agree. Not to denigrate the people that wanted to save it and use it, but just.
Yeah, no, but it's not.
Environmentally, it's a great idea.
I don't think that holds much sentimental value to.
Right, right.
Well, especially with the area it's in, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you have Light and Power's building, which is nice, and they're gonna keep working on that, and it's gonna, and the showboats across the river, and all the downtown shops, and, like, it has no, I don't think there's anybody who goes, you know, my first day was in Lige. You know what I mean? There's no, like, community involvement. I think it's cool that you're gonna use an existing structure, but to me, it's just not a, it's not an extra attraction to your project. And if you're talking about it going bad, I'd rather have people complaining about a field, because then you can just go over there and mull it, as opposed to, you know, now the building's crumbling, and now the roof's leaking, and now, I don't want to affect anything they've done over a backwater, and I don't wanna.
And we've been having that for years with that movie. Throw a little paint on it, and now it looks better, but.
And it's not our problem anymore with the straight-up sale. And like I said, if BGR is the direction we take, I have no concerns that there's not plenty of accountability with that.
Yeah, I think we all know Brett's track record, that he can do these projects, because he has.
Mm-hmm. Then will an official letter go out to the other five better second them, and?
Yeah, we can put a letter together.
I think, I think that we should do that, as well as that part of it.
Yeah, I think we put a letter together, and maybe we notify ahead of time.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I'll have, I'm taking this discussion for what it is, I'll look then for a motion to direct Mike to start the 20 days on the BGR.
Put a resolution.
And I'll support that, like, well, what you just said.
Okay. A motion and a second for BGR. Any other discussion today? Sue?
Councilmember Groves?
Yeah.
Councilmember Salzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers is absent, and Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. Jim?
Uh, first of all, I just wanna thank everybody for coming and spending five and a half dollars here today. It was a, it was a long day, really worth it, and without, I'll make a motion to adjourn at, was it 6:30?
6:24.
Oh, 6:24?
Yep.
Second, support that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will do the resolution after that now.
Okay.
Thanks, Jerry, for your time too.
You don't run, listen, and then you put the number on.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I'm only off the top.
Yeah, all right.
I'll, I'll type it and then give it to you, and then 20, the 20 days will start.